Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started again. All right, Larry, we have Mississippi Bend Area Education Agency, PAIR Education Educator Preparation Program Approval. It's a mouthful.
It is. For those of you that I haven't been able to speak in front of, my name is Larry Bice. I work in the department here. I had the team for educator preparation program approval. And several months ago, our team changed a little bit. And we were able to bring on Dr. Maryam Rodzabo onto our team. And she heads up the paraprofessional program approval. So she's going to bring two programs to you this morning.
Good morning, thanks for having me. As Larry mentioned, I'm bringing to you two programs today. But before I talk about the programs, I would like to talk about, we have 13 power education programs in Iowa through the AEA's and community colleges and one college. And overall, we have the number of candidates who were recommended for certification last year in 2019 to 2020. For the general certificate was three or four. The candidates would like to have an area of concentration. They would be contained for 45 hours in addition in the area of concentration. And we have had three area of concentration that we have had candidates recommended for certification. And those were early childhood education. That was 18 candidates that were recommended by all the programs. Four from special needs. And two from library, media, and technology. That's just an overview of the candidates that were recommended from all the programs in Iowa. And now I'd like to present to you Mississippi Bend AEA. We have Ms. Heather Whitman from the program here to answer if there are questions about the program. And I would like to just give you an overview, a brief overview about the program. The Per Education Certificate was offered since 2013. In this AEA, during this time, they have recommended 182 candidates for generalist certification, 29 for special needs, nine for early childhood, and four for school library and media. They have applied to get reapproval for generalist, early childhood, school library, special need area of concentration. They have also applied to add autism spectrum and disorder area of concentration. I'm going to talk about the different standards that we have looked at and some of the evidences they have provided. The first one is organization and resources standard. We believe that standard was met. They had appropriate resources, staff, and a full training for all candidates regardless of the degree. The diversity standard again is met. There was no concern about that. Clear statements and policies for job hiring process, recruitment initiatives for students, and anti-racism and inclusive initiatives by their staff. The faculty staff, faculty standard also was met. There was no concern. In fact, the faculty were qualified and strong. They were licensed in the area that they are teaching. And they also keep involved in the professional development in places where power educators are involved. The program assessment and evaluation standard was met. The assessment standard is met, the candidate, at the candidate level. And the assessment data and information that was collected also is used to improve the program. There was no concern about the assessment standard. The clinical practice standard was also met with no concern. The program requires appropriate field experience in state approved schools and monitors these opportunities to pro- and provide feedback to the candidates. Mississippi Bend AEA meets the standards in chapter eight. And their curriculum was also approved according to chapter 24 by Board of Educational Examiners. On behalf of the department, I'd like to recommend this program for board approval. Before that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the process and the program representative. Happy to answer questions.
I have a question. I have two questions. Good morning. You for the review. My first question is, I noticed that I really like the response in regards to cohort model. I find that that helps with retention. It was noted that there is finances barriers and they're looking at opportunities to help renew those barriers. Is this an opportunity where we can help use some type of collaboration with the legislature to appropriate funds for such a great program for paraeducators? Is there some type of opportunity there? So that's not a financial, so finances is not a barrier?
Heather, you might want to unmute yourself and.
Okay. All right, thank you. I apologize. I wasn't sure who you, if you were speaking, me or to Maryam or not. I would say that we just recently, we've been getting more phone calls about that. And, and first of all, I'm happy to report that we do have a reduced rate for paraeducators. And we are continually communicating and trying to outreach further and work with special education directors and curriculum directors. And I think the more and more that we do that and we market it, perhaps maybe we'll have some more schools looking at potentially paying for parts of that. Another area that some agencies have done is worked with their local community college. And with that comes the financial support with that. And so I've been toying with and do actually have some documentation from another, from great. I can't remember which AEA now off the top of my head. But so that is something that I can honestly tell you that we aren't there yet, but trying to work through in that, in that format and that process. And then sometimes we even just break it apart. You don't have to pay all at once. Like it's, if it's, if it's a 12, 12 week, we may take payments over a period of time as well to be inclusive.
You're muted, Kim. You're muted.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Thank you, Heather. My second question is, is that paraeducator is a goldmine for building retention for future educators? Is there, this is a general question. I don't know if the Mississippi AEA has this. But is there a pathway, pipeline to becoming a licensed teacher for paraeducators? This is so, this is such a goldmine for helping meet that diversity gap because that's where majority of non-traditional routes is the way they take it. They mostly, a lot of diverse teachers. But you know, I don't know if you know this answer, anybody in the room knows the answer. Is there a program to go from para to like, oh, is there?
There is. And Kimberly, if I can answer, this is Larry Bice. We've been approving teacher prep program changes like crazy lately. A lot of them are coming up with, with new programs to specifically help paraprofessionals in that pathway to become a teacher, to make it more efficient, make it more cost effective. There are programs to allow the paraprofessionals to do some of their conch work as a paraprofessional, provide that supervision, so they don't have to leave work in order to do that. Morningside starting program, University of U just had one approved. U and I is doing one, U of I is doing one. BBU is working in that regard. There are quite a few programs that are trying to help with this. As you say, it's a great goldmine to bring people who know what the teaching profession is like and help them to come up to that, that certification level. Thanks for the question, by the way. It was a great opportunity for it.
Most of the people that are doing a paraprofessional program already associates in the, in the school districts, are most of these people trying to get some sort of leg up like this?
They are not associate to have a paraprofessional certificate. They only have the high school diploma.
Okay.
They are not required to have an associate. But they can, they can be a paraeducator with that high school diploma.
Sure.
However, when they have the certificate, usually it helps them with a better salary or.
But that's really my question, I think, is, are these people already working as associates in the classroom? And trying to improve their, their ability to help, help kids?
We don't have that data.
Yeah.
That's, that's part of, one of the things that Maryam is restructuring is annual reporting. And, and that's, that's a great question that we haven't answered. And I expect a curiosity.
We should be able to get an answer in a year or so.
Do does background, does school does do background checks on, on the people that come in as paraprofessionals, as associates?
I don't.
Yes, they must. Yeah. Yeah, required.
For the, for the.
Anybody that's working in the system, right?
Anybody that's working at a P12 school has to do that. And as they're getting a certificate from the Board of Educational Examiners, they're doing the background check through the BOEE as well.
Whoever volunteers has some. Sure.
Any other questions? Comments? No?
I would move that we approve this program through 26, 27 up to 26, 27.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next program.
Oh yeah, sorry, go ahead.
The next program that I'm presenting to you is Iowa Central Community College Program. We have Mr. Jeffrey Halter representing the program. Just a little about the program. While Iowa Community Central, Central Community College has offered the general certificate in the past years, Sir Halter have been this in this position in the last two years. And he has looked at the program and have made several changes to improve the program. Some of the changes include increasing the number of credits. And still meeting the requirements to allow to allow more, more students take those classes. The additional two, they also are required to be requesting to addition to area of concentration in early childhood and special needs. The additional to my concentration in early childhood and special need which serve their community and Iowa in general. One of the benefits of the current changes in the curriculum is that it allows the transfer candidates who are seeking teacher appropriation forces to obtain a certification while working towards their full license.
Maryam, would you pause for one second? If you're online, I think there's a couple of people that aren't muted. We're getting some feedback. If you could please mute until you speak. I'm not sure who it is. There's a couple, I think. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
And so the area of concentration, first they are requesting to renew their general certification. And they are asking to add area of concentration in early childhood and special needs. I'm going to talk about the standards and how they have met the standards. The organization and resources. They have appropriate resources, staff, critical resources for all candidates through the community college library and etc. And through the different modalities. The diversity standard is also met. Policies and practices indicate involvement and retention of diverse candidates. Faculty standard is also met. The faculty countries are aligned with their previous teaching license and experience. Faculty who's teaching was a licensed faculty teacher. The questions, we asked some questions about their continued involvement in the setting where the power educator is present. And they presented to us that the faculty is doing substitute teaching in special education classrooms and areas where there are power educators present. And that's a good relationship that they promised that they will be continuing. The program assessment and evaluation is met. There is appropriate assessment of candidates, rubrics, competencies, and data that is utilized to improve the program are also reviewed. The clinical practices standard is met. The unit is monitoring those, ensuring that candidates have appropriate clinical standard in relation to the to the paraeducation. And they will be continuing to ensure that they, they will be getting the experience in the area of concentration. The candidates are receiving feedback and support from their cooperating teachers and the program supervisors. Iowa Central Community College meets the standards in chapter eight. We don't have any concerns. And their curriculum was also approved according to chapter 24 by the Board of Educational Examiners. On behalf of the department, I would like to recommend this program for state approval. And I'm open for question. If you have any questions about the process, again, I'm happy to answer. Otherwise, Mr. Halter is here to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Mike? You're, you're requesting two new ones, early childhood and special needs. Have you seen an increase demand for these paraprofessionals?
Yes, sir. One of the things that, we have an early childhood education center here in, in Fort Dodge. It's part of the Fort Dodge School District. One of the requirements for working there is early childhood, para-certification. And they've had trouble, they've had a lot of trouble getting, getting those people certified because of the lack of options in the area to gain that certification. And so that is really what drove the addition of that. And with the addition of special education, we had just added a transfer major in regards to special education, full teaching licensure for all of our region schools. And I thought it would be appropriate to go ahead and include that as part of that pathway as well. So that was my reasoning for looking at adding both of those.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Also, just to respond to Kim's questions real quick that she had asked the previous group, if that would be okay, that I made a comment about those.
Yep, go ahead.
Awesome. Yes, my first question was in regards to costs. And, and, and one of the things that you won't see in, in all of this is that I set up a pathway with the, with the adult education team that also takes care of the high set, which replaced the GED. And we've developed a pathway through a grant there with them so that those students have the opportunity also to get into paraeducation, hopefully build upon some success and, and be able to then transfer those credits earned into a licensure pathway as well. So that was something that we had done to address costs in addition to just having financial aid available and tell grants to our students to apply. And then, like I had mentioned with the special education, I built all of these certifications in a way that they're all built indirectly to all of our teacher licensure pathways. And so that way that as they're getting their education, my thought process was as they're getting their education and becoming a teacher, that they could then become qualified as a para within their first year or two at Iowa Central, allowing them to go and work in a classroom, build those relationships as they finish their last two years at a four-year institution for their teacher licensure. So I thought it would just be a great way for them to have that opportunity.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I, I'd just like to comment that I think your pathway with high set students is awesome. I, I think that's brilliant.
Yeah, that really came together at just kind of the last minute. And we threw it all together during the pandemic and, and were able to pull it off for our first session this fall. And so we're happy now to have it approved for, for those that will be taking it in fall of 21.
You tell me just a little bit about a generalist certification, about what are the topics that you touch on to receive that generalist certification?
Just all the requirements that are set out and objectives that, that I need to meet.
Well, again, I like to know what those are. Could you, could you be a little more specific?
Yeah, sure. For, so one of the courses is, is Introduction to Education. So they're really going to get a good history of education in there. We also go through understanding how to, to write a lesson plan, being able to understand how objectives work and how, and how we can align the, those lessons with those objectives. And then also how we can assess to be sure that those objectives are being met. Let's see.
General behavior and your appearance.
I'm sorry?
A general behavior and your appearance in a classroom. You've covered things like that.
Is in regards to as a, being a professional, what your appearance would be?
Sure.
Oh yeah, absolutely. I mean, dress code, it's, it's talked about often. And it's, you know, it's part of the paperwork and expectations that they're going to fill out that they understand that they need, need to dress and conduct themselves as a professional.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions?
I would move that Iowa Community College Para Educator Preparation Program through 26, 27.
They moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Thank you.
Closing achievement gap. Amy and Jay.
And Brad.
And Brad.
Or Brad and Jay. I'm not really sure. Okay.
I actually thought that you hear from me so often that maybe it would be nice if you heard from Brad.
That sounds good to me.
Stay here and then.
We'll miss you, Amy.
She is like five feet away, so.
So we have an app here. How do I get this up? Can they see this now?
See what?
Are you logged in?
I am not.
To Zoom? Okay.
Jay, you can just go to the Zoom app and share your screen.
Correct.
While you're doing that, you want, like Brad could give it in front of her.
So yeah, I'll go ahead and get into that. So every year we have a report that we've put together around closing achievement gaps. And then every year there's, in the context of sharing those data, we want to talk a little bit about maybe one aspect of those data and what we're doing in terms of responding to that information, right? So what we've got here is that information from that closing gaps achievement report. But what we really want to focus on today is putting that all in the context of our response to the pandemic. It's been an incredibly long year in so many ways. You've talked about that in multiple meetings before, right? And as we head into the summer and next school year, we're hoping, I think collectively, that we get ourselves closer to normal, whatever that, that new normal is. But something looks more like a traditional school year than what the school year was in the end of last school year as well. So we want to be really plantful though, even though some of it will look like what we're used to seeing. We also know that the vast majority of our students and those that teach them and support them are still going to be feeling the effects of the last year and a half or so. The trajectory of learning has changed for a lot of folks. So social, emotional, behavioral health needs are different for a lot of folks as well. So we want to make sure that as we're sharing these data with you, that we're also doing it in recognition of this last year and a half. So our response needs to be different than it usually is as well. So that's the type of information we really want to hit on here today.
So with that setup, Brian's going to allow me to present here in just one second.
I should be able to do it. I'm just trying to promote you.
Okay, there we go. So appreciate this setup.
No problem.
You should be promoted. There you go. Yay.
Little things. Okay. So, um, over the next hour, we want to, so we, we've got a lot of time for dialogue and discussion. Want to talk about the most recent information in terms of who are the students in Iowa schools? What do the latest achievement results tell us? As Brad mentioned, certainly the current challenges that, that exist. And then priorities to accelerate learning. You know, presented to many of you before, I tend to move quickly, so please stop me, ask questions. We do have a whole hour. So let's make this a dialogue. So before we get to that, you know, just want to reflect on the board policies themselves. And here are three from the department website. So certainly the achievement gap report, which is a legislative report, but one that I think is really valuable from an agency perspective. Reflect on the latest information, but certainly ties to the goals prior, or the board's priorities for eliminating the achievement gap, opportunity gaps, you know, focusing on underserved children in order to drive policies, practices that really focus more on what happens with kids as they leave K-12 and are prepared for, future ready, prepared for the workforce. And then certainly preparing learners for tomorrow's workforce. So the first piece is, what do the latest data tell us about who the kids are in Iowa schools? This represents a 20-year window from 2000, 2000, 2001, 2002, two school year to the fall of 20. So throughout this school year. So just a couple of, you know, main highlight points here. You know, Iowa schools are the most diverse than they've ever been. You know, we didn't see an increase this last year, partially between 19 and 20 to 2021. Partially that was due to the actual decline in enrollment. We had, before the recent decline, we had 17 years of continued increases. And the percent change in terms of the percent of increase in minority students has been about 0.8 percentage points, so just under a percent change. So in other words, you know, fewer white students and more minority students. And, but with this last year and the decline enrollment, that, those numbers sort of held to be about the same. So, you know, we expect with, you know, assuming things stay stable and, you know, we don't, you know, the, the numbers continue to decrease. I would imagine that enrollment will quickly catch back up where we're continuing to see increases in overall enrollment and then changing the diversity of our student population.
So we think CO would have huge amount to do with the numbers. Did CO have a lot to do with that?
Yes, absolutely. Particularly in the early elementary grades, where the declines happen the most was kindergarten and first grade. So either kids, you know, or parents rather, holding their kids back, if you will, for another year or choosing some other option, whether that's homeschool or non-public enrollment. These are public school enrollment totals, to be clear. You know, one other thing that I think was pretty interesting too, is while we did see a decline, decline in early elementary, particularly K and kindergarten and first grade, we saw an actual increase in high school enrollments at the same time this last year.
Are you seeing?
Pre-K.
Pre-K.
Voluntary four-year-old.
This, this does not include statewide voluntary. This is just K-12.
Okay. And maybe you'll get to this, but do you have a breakdown on what the minorities are?
Yeah.
Okay, that's right. Wait.
So we've seen this slide deck before.
Yeah, if you can, we can keep that going. So, so you can see here the, the change. And again, this is over that 20-year window. In particular, the Hispanic student population growth, black or African-American students account for the, the large, largest percentages of increase. Multiracial, back in 2001, it wasn't actually a category. You had to pick one as opposed to, you know, a combination of different race groups. So those three, black, Hispanic, and multirace are the largest percentages of that 24%.
On your previous slide, there was a slight increase in minority enrollment. Most of the decrease came in white enrollment. Any general thoughts on why?
I mean, certainly. So the increase in minority enrollment, you know, that's a national trend. But to your point, I think what you're getting at is why are we seeing a decrease in white students? Well, why is it all, why aren't all students growing? Or all student groups growing at sort of equal rates? I'm not sure why, in terms of why we're seeing white students drop. But certainly nationally, you know, particularly the increase in Hispanic students is a national phenomenon.
Might it be related to the census data with a decline in birth rates? In the country?
There's an interesting YouTube video that projects different ethnic minority groups from pastures through two thousand twenty-eight. And this is national, and so the percent of white students in classes continues to decline in relation to the others. And one that kind of jumps out, jumped out at me was the multirace was continuing to grow exponentially compared to what other minorities do. And things probably be maybe defining things more clearly could be part of that process.
It could be, yeah, it could be that previously a student who is multiracial would identify as white. So I have grandkids that are multiracial, and if you ask them, they would say white. They would not check multiracial on their own. So I think maybe that's part of it.
But back to the birth rates, I mean, we had. So obviously, there's a five-year lag, right, in terms of birth to sort of that supply to schools. But we had seen sort of a leveling off, but not a decline yet. I mean, certainly the information, you know, that we saw in the papers yesterday, you know, lowest birth rates in quite some time will have an impact both nationally and certainly within Iowa.
Are duly enrolled students in these numbers or are they completely separate?
So dual enrollment.
Like homeschool?
Homeschool. They are included, yes.
Okay.
If they're dual enrolled.
Right, not if they're just straight or not.
That's correct.
And you're going to talk to us about how we fix the problem that COVID created.
It's like, what? That's hilarious.
Yes.
If they don't talk to you about that, it's like five feet away.
So while at the same time, we're seeing, you know, certainly race and ethnic diversity. This gives you a twenty-year window of the increase in the number of students eligible for free or reduced price lunch, which is really our measure of low SES. And so that twenty-year window, you have about twenty-seven percent of students versus the most recent year, which is just under forty-two percent. So significant increase over that, you know, twenty-year span. However, when you look at, you know, from two thousand eleven, twelve to twenty twenty-one, you can see it is slightly up, but pretty much a flat line. So we've sort of leveled off. And more recently, in the last five years, it's sort of gone up and down. So we've seen sort of dips. You know, one other note related to the twenty twenty-one data and pandemic, we did see or, you know, lots of states reported the decrease in the number of families that were filling out eligibility. And, you know, because they weren't in person, although Iowa largely was in person for the most part, that that might be some somewhat due to the recent downtick, right? Like because families, not all families were in school, they may not have gone in to fill out the paperwork.
Well, when the federal government's providing lunch for free for everybody, it declines the number of applications as well. That's, I don't have to fill out an application.
Absolutely.
Beds have changed that too over years, right?
What? The income guidelines, not lately.
Not in the last?
No. Okay. So we're gonna pivot and talk about the latest achievement data. So this is really focusing on the gap between Iowa and the nation. So the National Assessment of Educational Zone Progress is given every two years. It's a requirement that states participate. It's the only national assessment that exists. It's a stratified sample, so not all Iowa schools participate every two years. And so that's why you see, in this case, it's a sixteen-year window to see a, you know, a new set of data every two years. We were actually scheduled to have an administration in spring of twenty-one, but the Department of Ed decided to postpone that, given everything that's going on. So we will again participate in spring of twenty-two. So for one year, there'll be, you know, a change to a three-year track. We've actually been participating as a state since nineteen ninety. This just gives you that last sixteen-year window. And I think the big takeaway here is that Iowa, both in reading grade four, so it's also given at mainly, the main NAEP is grade four, grade eight, reading, these are reading data. We also do the same thing for math. There are also some additional studies focused areas that they do such as social studies, science, et cetera. But those are less frequent and not quite as often as these data points. But so what we've seen across time is that Iowa has gone down slightly. And the nation has caught up. So we perform at basically the national average or close to the national average when we compare to other states nationally. Drilling into that further, and so this is what the gap looks like for the most recent data, twenty nineteen. And where Iowa sits sort of rank ordered in relation to other states as well as the nation as a whole. And this is white student achievement. And you can see here that white students compared to other states, white students are below both the national average and in the sort of bottom quarter compared nationally. Looking at Hispanic students, the second largest student group in Iowa, you see the same sort of phenomenon.
Can you plug that back? Scale score, so.
Yeah.
Is this for public schools only?
This is public schools.
It's the same scale on each of the slides. It's from one eighty-five to two sixty.
Um, no. But the, you know, the relative placement is very similar. So while we're focusing on reading, you see the same phenomenon in math. This is Hispanic students and then black students as well. And then lastly, free or reduced price lunch, eligible students are, you know, in the middle and close to the national public average. So here's basically the summary, you know, Iowa's, Iowa's results on NAEP are flat. The nation as a whole has increased. Iowa performance is not significantly different from the national average. Hispanic and black students score below the national average. And in the case of black students in Iowa, well below the national average. But then the other piece that I think is critical is that white students are also below the national average. So going back to the demographic population and sort of tying these two pieces together, white, white students are, you know, the majority of the student population. And the fact that we're below the average and the sheer sort of number of white students actually overinflates our score as a whole. It's a phenomenon called Simpson's Paradox. But basically, as the demographics continue to change, as we become more diverse, as we see a decline in the white student population, unless we do something, we're going to see the, not just at the national average, but below the national average.
So this is Georgia. I have a question.
Yes.
So you say that the NAEP results are flat, but if you go back to the, to the like four slides, where it looks like there's a sharp decline.
That's.
Can you talk about that then? That doesn't look flat.
Yeah, I mean, it's more.
If I think about eighth grade in particular.
Yes. Yes, it's down six scale score points. That's a downward trend, yes. Looking at grade four, it's also down two scale score points.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
So Georgia, this is Amy Williamson.
Hey, Amy.
The thing that I was looking at those two, I think we could plot all of the other states and we could look at that. But the other thing about that is so national public dropped, Iowa dropped. You always have to take into consideration what happened to everybody else's scores that year. The important thing about both of these graphs is Iowa's trends follow national public trends, but we don't like break our trend. Do you see what I mean? Like, so something might have happened with the way that the test was scaled or the questions, you know. But we didn't break our trend, which is not particularly good. I mean, neither did, the national average didn't exactly go up either. And so it could have been an effect of the way the test was. It could have been something that happened with everyone that year. But I don't, you know, dropping, you know, six scale score points is, it looks pretty sharp, but this is also scaled so that you can see the changes. And so if we did the entire scale available on the test, it probably wouldn't look quite as sharp.
Yes. So Nate gives us about one percent of the kids in our state, right? So if I'm saying how many kids are actually taking this test, we'd say about one percent. And who selects the schools? I mean, my state would look really good. I'll just pick the right schools.
Yeah, it's not done that way. I mean.
Okay, so how is that done?
So we've, US Department of Ed contracts. So they work closely with a contractor. The contractor does, it's called a stratified sample. So they want representativeness. So not only, so going back to the first slide, you know, what's we need to make sure that the schools themselves are represented, but we also need to make sure the kids in those schools represent the state as a whole. So, so as an example, you know, our NAEP coordinator gets the list of students who are enrolled. And they do, you know, sample based on that list to ensure that the overall list of kids. So it's not up to the school to say, hey, you're here today. We need you to show up in this classroom. It is, okay, you're Jay Pennington, you are, you've been selected to participate. So not all kids from a school are also selected. So they need to look at both the characteristics of the school, but it's very targeted in terms of who's selected to be sitting in the room taking the test.
Am I right? About one percent take this test. Is that fair?
So each year annually, we have, each administration, it's about a hundred and eighty schools. Off the top of my head, I don't know the number of kids. You could be right. I just. It's a small percentage.
Yeah, extremely small.
That's where you're going.
Right, yeah. And I'm not sure that's a reliable factor, although a lot would argue that NAEP is probably the best assessment that we have of where we're at. So not, I'm not discounting that. I think that's significant information. But I'm wondering if it's such a small sample that we truly get a good picture of what's going on in our state.
Go ahead, Amy.
So there are, there's actually quite a bit of research out there that you can read on it, whether NAEP presents a reliable and valid picture achievement in any one state or even across the nation. The National Center for Education Statistics pulls the sample purposely to be valid for interpreting the results so that you can compare states exactly like those graphs just showed you. So it is valid to compare Iowa to other states and by subgroup. And so the sample is statistically valid for those purposes. It would not be valid for us to then go look at the kids who took it within Iowa and start comparing their achievement within the state because the sample's not big enough for that. And it's not big enough for any subgroup of students. So we couldn't say kids who took it in Iowa who were free and reduced lunch, we know this about them because we actually don't know anything about them. Sample's not big enough for that. But it is big enough for us to know exactly the things that are represented here, and that's the green size that we can get to. So it's good enough for that. It doesn't tell us what to do for instruction, but it tells us that much information. The other thing that we know is that it actually is if we triangulate that with the information that we have from the Iowa assessments, our screening assessments, all of those things are true, like all of those gaps are large, persistent, and they've been true for, I mean, I've worked here for fifteen years. The data have looked the same, essentially. Now, we've made some really nice progress every once in a while in some areas, right? Like we did some great progress in early literacy, which you've been here for. But it takes time to take, make that progress in early literacy, affect a measure that's that made to measure something that big, right? It's like, I think, you know, Dave Tilly has used the example of like weighing a hog or the two-ton truck, right? And you're making these incremental changes and you're trying to affect that thing. So I feel like we have a reliable indicator. There is just an indicator of something so big that we're not affecting it yet. So that's my two cents.
Do we expect, so this most recent day is two thousand nineteen, when the last test was taken, correct? So it's two thousand twenty-one, and you said that they're delaying it till two thousand twenty-two. Should we expect in two thousand twenty-two nationally and Iowa to decrease because of learning loss from COVID? Is that kind of what's expected or is everyone kind of, I mean, or are we thinking that we can catch up and then it'll, I mean, I guess?
So I think that's an emerging area. I mean, we do have some initial data, which I will get to. But I think that is the expectation. But, you know, the area itself, there's not a lot of data yet. And we are going to have more data soon. That, the NAEP data itself will be out in October twenty-two. So that'll be the next time we'll be able to update this graph.
And will there be more data around like, I was talking to a friend of mine and her daughter, she said that experienced more learning loss because she was an age where she was trying to learn how to read, she said virtually trying to learn. So I think there are certain skills where virtually it doesn't work as well as, you know, maybe an eighth grader, you know, practicing doing math or something like that, you know, where they can kind of, they're more self-sufficient than like a first grader trying to learn how to read, right? So she said that she did everything the same that she did with her older daughter, with her younger daughter in terms of helping her reading and stuff like that. But she said that she could just tell that she wasn't where she needed to be. And she'll catch up. She's, I mean, she's, she'll be okay, but she was just like, I mean, virtually, she's like, there're just some things that, you know, I mean, it's just some things that in person, and I mean, I think most people agree with that, in person is probably better for learning how to read and things like that. So is there gonna be, I guess, and things that are looking at data and stuff like certain grades or certain things that people, I guess, certain points that, you know, maybe you were lost because it was virtual and these things were better in person or something. Or is it gonna be, I only know what I'm asking, but.
I was just gonna say, yeah, I mean, you bring up a great point. You know, the age at which you're developing those skills, right? So that developmental period, it won't be seen sort of universally, like all kids had a ten-point learning loss. But, you know, because there wasn't the in-person learning, because they were sort of at that critical age, it had more of a lasting impact potentially. I think what I would add to that, one of the benefits from the early literacy implementation law is we've got those universal screening data for all students K-six, right? For every school building that has K-six in it. So, and that's taken three times a year. So we will be able to, with the exception of, I think we have not doing it last spring, right?
That's correct.
Because for the most part, schools were closed, but otherwise we've got those data. So we will be able to look at not only for statewide data, but every district and every school has a state or will be able to look longitudinally over time at how those early literacy skills are developing. And that's only one slice of the greater whole that we're talking about. We'll have some of those data that could give us some information about.
We'll have some of those data that could give us some information about the impact of at-home or, or virtual learning versus face-to-face.
I have that impact between, by the wild card will be the number of students participating in that last year to this year to the following year. If there's, especially in the younger grades, if some kids are sitting out a year or whatever.
Right, I mean, when they come back. Yeah, when they come back, we'll be able to, because those tests are three times a year. Well, schools and we will collectively be able to.
They'll have the same student number.
Yeah, exactly. And whether or not, if they were out of year, hadn't started yet, we'll be able to make some interesting, do some interesting analyses in that regard, so.
Those students are out of year. What does that mean? Are they like online or are they?
I was um, just referring to um, some families have decided to, I'm just, roll their students.
Or school.
Oh, okay.
Just some of the different patterns in response.
To pandemic.
Is this NAEP really, I mean, it might be one of the better ways to measure some of these things, achievements, but if it is so big, are we sure there's gonna be a big change? I mean, it sounds like some of the things you were just talking about, Jay, would be more illustrative of learning decline or gap than that big graph you just had before, because it, it's either gonna have to be disastrous, you know, and go down. Then that would be probably, the situation would be worse than what that shows. Or it'll, it won't show up in just one year, like, like Amy was just saying. I'm, I'm not sure that's.
Yeah, tests like, like the, the NAEP, um, and even to an extent the Iowa assessments as well. They measure a broader range of skills. And so they're, they measure more things, but they don't have as many items per thing. And so those tend to move more slowly up and down over time because they're measuring so many different things.
So the gap, it won't, I mean, by definition, then, it's gonna level out even a pandemic year.
Yeah.
Will we know the achievement loss from last, this school year to next by virtue of that? That testing.
Yeah, we will, and that, that giving a, a great illustration why we, we try not to make big decisions based on one set of data, right?
Sure, that's, that's good.
And we've got some, Jay's got some additional information that's more particular to Iowa, but the Iowa assessments.
And so it's not perfect, but it's the best we have.
Yeah, Mike.
I'm of the opinion that in-school is better than out-of-school. So when NAEP does this nationwide, obviously there were some states that were much more open to in-class instruction and some states that really just closed the schools. So how do you think that's going to be represented in the data that comes out in two thousand twenty-two? Would, would you expect maybe, and I, I think I would, but would you expect maybe Iowa to move up?
Cause we were.
Because we had a lot of in-class instruction. So what does that really tell us then about the learning loss or performance?
So I don't know in twenty-two if they're gonna actually change or ask questions on the NAEP related to uh, either ask kids or ask at school level um, to try to get at what you're talking about, like how to actually tie um, you know, whether or not you were in-person to achievement. They, NAEP is collecting information and we're participating as a state, taking a look at the percent of schools that are uh, schools as well as students within those schools that are in-person versus hybrid. I'm gonna get to, so, so I would think that as a state that was more in-person, that that did or will help us as a state as a whole in terms of um, decreasing loss relative to others. You know, those that were not in-person um, are likely to see, you know, uh, more loss. Um, but I'll, I'll get to that here in one second.
That, that's good data, but I'm more interested in what's going on in Iowa. And anecdotally, wasn't it more metro areas, bigger school districts that were more virtual than smaller schools or private schools? That, so it's not gonna, it's not gonna, it, it won't be even.
Right, it's, it's um, we use the best data that we have to.
I, I, I get it.
And um, I think when Jay's kind of getting into some of these Iowa assessment data that are more particular to Iowa and are across the state, then we've got some more information there. And I think we have it from this year.
I'll shut up and let.
Can I just jump in for a second? I'm sorry that I'm totally interrupting you, Brad.
No, you're fine.
Now less than five feet away.
I just don't want us to run out of time for this. So I think that I probably should have processed this conversation with, we have all kinds of data that are about Iowa schools right here, and so there's a ton of data to get through so that we can actually tell you what we're doing about learning.
I get the message.
Which is national data to set the context about where Iowa sits. So that we can tell you about all the Iowa specific data. And then we can tell you about the interventions.
I know, right? Be quiet.
And she's looking at this side of the table.
And so that's not really getting us where we need to be. So if you don't mind, that would be great. Sorry.
We'll stop asking questions.
Another great question, I was gonna worry about just one assessment. And so um, we're not gonna get to tell you about the great work if we don't enough, tell you the rest of the data.
So pivoting to just Iowa-specific data, the Iowa statewide assessment of student progress, what you're actually seeing here is the spring nineteen administration. Uh, spring twenty was canceled. We're in the midst of the spring twenty-one uh, right now. Uh, like three-quarters of kids have taken an assessment that we would expect to take the assessment. And we will have updated data later this summer to be able to update the graph. But to just to level set, this is twenty nineteen. So again, scale scores um, on the Y-axis and the X-axis are grades, so grades three through eleven. And um, what you see here is the average uh, black student. The, and then above is the average white student. The red line represents proficiency. So um, where that proficient line sits in terms of whether or not kid would be counted yes proficient or, or no, or not proficient. And then the, the boxes represent the scale score difference between, you know, that particular grade level. So you can see here, um, the gaps start around twenty-one scale score points, but they almost double by the time you get to grade eleven. So um, uh, and the average uh, black student group as a whole sits below proficiency um, on average. Um, and in the upper grades, they're, it's close to proficiency. And when, so, so this is uh, black to white, Hispanic to white. What you see here is the actual number or scale score points, or the difference is smaller, but it's still uh, and Hispanic students are right at proficiency um, in the uh, lower grades, but above proficiency in the upper grades. But you still see that gap itself double. Same thing with free, reduced price lunch. You know, free, reduced price lunch students right at the proficiency in the lower uh, levels, above proficiency in the higher grades, but again doubling. The largest gap is between black and white. F R L is uh, next, and then Hispanic students is the smallest, but there's still a gap. The last piece that I just wanted to show you is something called an effect size. An effect size is a, a statistical number between, you know, roughly zero and one. You can have effect size of above one, um, that is supposed to measure the strength of that relationship. Um, and what these bars really represent is um, what's called an uh, a, a moderate to um, significant or strong effect. So anything point five or above is what's called a moderate effect. And then point eight or above is a large effect. So you can see here um, that for the most part, whoops, the effects are between moderate and significant. And in particular for the black-white uh, effect size, it's a large effect. So what's the takeaway? Achievement gaps are much smaller in the lower grades. So uh, you know, if you're starting out behind, it's going to compound across time to be significant. So when you're leaving high school, um, it's gonna be harder and it's already, you're already behind. You're significantly behind, but certainly will impact preparedness for work and beyond. So what's our current challenge? Um, and these are just, this is an emerging area. There's not a ton of, of data or hard data yet. It's gonna, we're gonna continue to see more information come out, particularly as states administer their state's assessments. And we have those state-level data. So you will be able to make some, um, it, it won't be a direct effect or it won't be causation, but you'll be able to see um, what did it look like perhaps in a state where there was more uh, remote learning versus um, uh, less. So these are basically three different studies. Uh, one is McKinsey and Company. They did um, tried to estimate using like epidemiological models. Uh, they had a um, basically a model that looked at um, you know, uh, high-quality, medium-quality and sort of low-quality online or in-person learning options. And um, basically, you know, with uh, without a lot of data, what do they believe things are going to look like in terms of, of learning loss? And uh, basically what they came up with um, was that even with the highest quality, that they were estimating three to four months behind what they would expect students that were in-person in a normal year. And in the um, low quality, it was more like a year behind. Is what McKinsey and Company was estimating. Ran took a different approach. They actually, in the lack, like, with the lack of hard data, what they decided to do was uh, do surveys of uh, principals and teachers to say, what are you seeing in um, in, in educating kids in the twenty-one, uh, twenty-twenty-one school year? And, you know, basically um, you know, principals indicated, you know, need to have support from district leaders. They need to really focus on quality strategies to address learning loss and uh, how to have more hands-on learning, the need for teacher training, particularly in the area of distance learning. As you can imagine, um, but you know, that was done out of a, a necessity, not necessarily out of the way that it would have rolled out if you had planfully thought of doing distance learning. So um, you know, principals mentioned like, you know, the need for focusing on reducing learning lab, learning gaps and particularly addressing student mental health needs. Uh, the last uh, example that I included really takes a third yet approach and focused uh, more uh, on a financial argument. And you know, with states feeling the, you know, sort of differential impact based on um, you know, what, what was happening uh, in those metro areas or happening within those states. You know, that there will certainly be an economic impact, right? And um, their argument was really more of a stimulus argument that um, uh, basically areas that were shut down the tightest are going to feel the most direct economic impact. A- as well as um, you know, so if you're a large city, you're likely to be more minority. You're likely to have higher levels of poverty. But uh, you know, they, that um, the financial impact is likely to further exacerbate areas that um, have more diversity than other areas. And, and so uh, you know, if there's some kind of funding cliff that exists within a state, they're going to, you know, education being one of the largest budget items likely did impact overall funding for schools. Uh, haven't seen that in Iowa. There is an increase in state supplemental aid. But you, you know, they were pointing out the uh, you know, the need to take a look at finances and make sure that uh, in essence, K-12 education uh, doesn't, don't see dr- will not see drastic cuts decreasing the number of educators that are supporting kids. So here's uh, three quotes, I'm not gonna read these to you um, uh, from each of the studies. You, you know, McKinsey, this isn't gonna be a temporary shock that's easily erased in an academic year. Um, that could be seen for different grades uh, based on, you know, where kids are uh, in terms of their development. And that, you know, uh, we could see wide name of gaps particularly for the most vulnerable students. But let's put Iowa in the national context, right? To an earlier point, Iowa schools have been in session for the most part. Not, not all schools. Uh, certainly there's been disruption in certain pockets that will. But for the most part, um, and particularly in rural Iowa, it's been almost exclusively in-person. So what will that, what will that uh, mean to Iowa's numbers? We'll, we'll find out soon. Spring assessments underway. We'll have data over the summer to be able to take a look at, probably not before the retreat, but certainly can bring that back to the board um, at some point uh, uh, over the summer to take a look at. But I, here's my hypothesis. I would ha- you know, guess that the impact will be likely based on that enrollment pattern, the areas that were in-person versus not in-person. At this point, I'm gonna pass it over to Brad to talk about the priorities to accelerate learning.
So um, this is one slide. Uh, you should be able to see what's there. So I don't necessarily wanna read this at you. I wanna, that probably be the best use of time for you to ask us some questions here about what it is we're going to do. What we're highlighting here is the need to have all hands on deck. Department, A D As, higher ed, professional, community partners. Jay talks about um, the long-term impact and magnitude of impact of the pandemic. So these aren't things that are gonna be undone and erased in a year's time. This is gonna take a recommitment on all of our part to work together to build a tight network so we are supporting our schools and our communities and our families. We've prioritized six things that um, started uh, pre-pandemic. And in a lot of ways, these aren't new, but we've had to approach these things in a different way because of the pandemic, and it's also really just highlighted the need for some of these things to a greater extent. So we know we need to work on accelerating learning. As Jay said, we, there's likely to be a lot of learning loss, um, and we'll see that in our data and what that actually looks like and actually means. But um, this has highlighted uh, some practices that we know could be effective for accelerating learning because we've got schools pre-pandemic. It didn't have uh, enough of their students proficient in reading or math, et cetera. So there are strategies here that really extend beyond the pandemic response, but the pandemic response is bringing them to light and increasing the urgency around them. Importance of uh, supporting social, emotional, behavioral health in our schools. Uh, making sure this is all connected to uh, what it means to be future-ready in Iowa. Uh, we've talked to you previously about Iowa E-Learning Central, which is part of a, a large federal grant that we received to build up online learning resources. The pandemic has highlighted the need for that, and we're building infrastructure and resources towards that end. We've got a recommitment here to our early literacy work. It never went away. But we know that if we're gonna see the impact that we wanna see, we need to collectively recommit ourselves to that work. And finally, um, I know all of you appreciate the importance of leadership. You provide statewide uh, and state-level leadership for us and for our system, but this goes all the way through um, our building principals and administrators, our teacher leaders, you name it. The importance of leadership so we can laser focus on these priorities is gonna be critical. So we've got uh, quite a to-do list here and an ambitious set of ideas about what we wanna do. But wanna create some time here for you to ask us any questions that come to mind based on what. The data we've shared or some of these priority areas as well, so what questions or, or guidance do you have for us?
The learning gaps growing as kids go through school, I'm sure there's probably maybe a variety of factors that may. Impact why that grows, have you identified those factors or any mitigating interventions that could help?
Sure, um, a couple of things come to mind, uh, for me. Um, and it's, uh, borne out in research around it, but I think it's, it also applies in Iowa in practice and we see it as well. Which is, um, and you saw in some of those slides, the gap gets wider the further on in. The career students have in schools, right, the gaps are relatively narrow in third grade, but they get wider and wider by the time they graduate. That's what, that's part of the importance of recommitting to the early literacy work, pre-K through gra- grade three in particular. If we can improve our reading instruction, we've got a much better shot at reducing or eliminating some of those gaps that grow over time. Because reading is such an important access skill to the rest of the curriculum. So part of the equity issue here is improving our reading instruction as a state. Um, I think what we've seen, um, from our work previously with early literacy implementation, our Every Student Succeeds Act work. Is, um, we've got great teachers doing great things, but across the board. We don't have enough evidence-based reading instruction going on, especially in the early grades. So that's gonna be huge, uh, I think, towards that end. The other part, uh, is working on. Issues around climate and culture in our schools, one of the measures that we have that's. We find helpful and we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from our schools that they want these data are helpful, are called our conditions for learning survey. Like we've shared that with the board previously, but we get to hear from students about the climate and culture of their schools, how relationships are going. What type of support they have, do they feel safe in school? Did things, uh, those are topics that often, uh, uh, look different depending on what group you're affiliated with. So we know there are equity issues, uh, related to, um, conditions for learning. And there are strategies that we can use to improve, um, conditions in schools. And so I would say, um, from the things that we've got, the ability to impact is the Department of Education. Improving those conditions for learning, improving early literacy instruction are gonna be huge.
Questions for the conditions for learning, were they, were they just taken from that bigger assessment that goes out with?
The Iowa U survey?
Yeah, were those just excerpts coming from the Iowa U survey or what was the, the method behind the madness to select those questions?
Right, that's a great question, um, uh, several years ago, uh, before, uh, the Every Student Succeeds Act. We had added education-relater, school-based questions to the Iowa U survey that were focused on those particulars. We had, we decided part of our plan with the US Department of Education was to include just those education items. In a conditions for learning survey, so when that became part of our plan. It's not living just exclusively in the Iowa U survey, it's taken separately. So to your point, that those were at one time part of that, that survey and we've extracted them, so they're laser-focused on. The education part, I've included that as a centerpiece for our, our Every Student Succeeds Act work.
But to, to add to what Brad's saying, that the items themselves came from work with COVID National Climate Center. And it sounds like a meteorological thing, well, it's not, it's focused on the climate in schools. And so those items came originally from the survey work that they did, uh, in working with, uh, with schools. And it's not just students' perception that is sort of the, certainly understanding students' perception around climate and culture is important. But it's also the triangulation with administrators and with teachers that the magic happens, right? Kids are clo- like, they feel supported by not only their peers, but also supported by a teacher. And so, um, the climate, uh, C- CFL, um, because conditions for learning. Uh, is, we need to certainly begin to measure student voice and student perception. But then schools need to implement those other pieces in order to increase, see increases in student achievement.
Other pieces?
Well, two, it's not just a student survey, there's a, a leadership, or I'm sorry, a parent's survey, a, uh, teacher's survey. So that you're aligning parents' perception about what should be happening in the classroom, with kids' perception about what is happening in the classroom. Uh, along with the teacher's expectation. That is just sort of the critical piece to help with climate.
Two questions, I hope the first one's real easy. The goals that you've outlined, um, is there additional funding particularly from the national government to help you do these goals?
Absolutely, yes, some of the, the S R funds are what's driving this.
So our portion that we hold back within that ten percent that isn't otherwise designated will help leverage some of this work.
Second question, and you may, uh, I don't know which slide it was, but it was, I think, the twenty nineteen results that showed white, black and. Proficiency. If I remember that slide correctly. Black students tended to be below proficiency up until I assume about junior high. And then they got to the, uh, proficiency. Okay, so we hear so much about. What happens in the third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade is so critical in terms of reaching proficiency, is there any reason to explain why? They're below proficiency all the way up until ninth grade. And then in those two grades, they become proficient and then they're below proficiency again. Amy?
Well, so this is a, a year of scores, this is not a cohort. And so this is, um. The, and this test is, um, quite new. And so this is the new, um. What used to be the Iowa assessments, right? And so we actually are getting a few years of this assessment being given to know what it really looks like over time for kids. So this is what this, this particular year's kids, um, who are. Kids who identify as Caucasian, kids who identify as African-American, right? Because, um, we don't identify them, they identify, uh, for themselves and then, um, what their scores look like. So we don't know if that's what it's gonna look like next year. And then the other thing I would say is, whatever, if this were a cohort. Whatever that gap looks like in the younger grades does when you look at, or a cohort, what? So we're really excited that there are kids in the upper grades that are, um, hitting the proficiency area. But if you did look at those kids who weren't proficient when they're in the younger grades. It, the gap gets bigger and so they're just different ways of looking at the data. So I, I love that we have kids that are proficient. But that doesn't make me feel good about the ones that aren't proficient in the other grades, like, that's, that's how I look at it. Others might have other ways to interpret it as well.
Amy, did we see the similar lines with the Iowa assessments?
That's a better Jay question, because I don't remember.
So even though the underlying instrument, in the outset, we only have the one year from the spring that time in the industry. We don't have cohort data to really look at, this is a cross-section of kids, right? To see, you know, in the early intervention, you know, work. So a kid that was originally not a benchmark in, let's say, first grade, is benchmarked by the end of the year. What does their proficiency look like, uh, in third grade? So we'll be able to, to look more specifically the more years of data. But you do see a similar, back to your original question, uh, phenomenon looking at the eyes.
Oh, this is kind of just reflecting on what we've seen in past years.
Yeah, and, and reflective of what we see across states and in the general body of research, which is. We have these gaps and they get bigger over time, if we don't intervene and do something different.
So speaking of that, I have to ask. Are, are there practical things like extending the school year or all year round or third grade two-point-o? That, that could be implemented, I mean, because you wanna address this now, not. Yeah, I don't wanna add a thirteenth year of school, I mean, that seems like it's too late.
Right, absolutely.
Community colleges would tell you that. Media education in that.
I can tell you as an employer, yes.
Right, and, and it gets harder and harder to remediate. Longer they get in their, their school career. There are absolutely things we can do. Students that are struggling to learn how to read, and this can be true for other areas as well, if we're talking about reading. They, those students need more structure and teachers typically need more structure around the delivery of instruction itself. A lot of times you don't spend enough time on the basic building blocks of what reading is, so sounds letters made and how those things go together. Students that, uh, or children that have, that are already performing well. Can deal with less structure in their instruction, but when, especially we've got a large percentage of students that aren't where they need to be. That instruction needs more structure to it, not all of it, but at least some of it. So we can get to some of those basic foundational building blocks of what early literacy means. Um, and we have to have good evidence-based, uh, materials and interventions in place. But when you've got half of your students that aren't reading where they need to be. You can't have an intervention for each kid that isn't at proficiency, schools aren't staffed that way. There isn't enough physical room in the building to be able to do that type of thing. So we have to change what we do with all the students for at least part of that time. And, um, there are curriculum materials and intervention materials out there and training, uh, to teach teachers how to do those. We, we know how to do those things. But sometimes it's an uphill battle convincing folks to go there, um, because. We've often been driven by philosophies of education as opposed to evidence in education, which is what we're trying to bring to this.
Are we expecting a material increase in the number of students who don't go to the next level? Because of this?
Because of the pandemic, you mean?
I mean, if we have this gap and we expect it to be bigger, it would follow to me that. I mean, it won't go from third to fourth grade, there'll be a lot of kids have to redo the third grade.
Is that something that parents can deter, like, can I, uh, I as a parent say, like, you know, like, my, my son is turning five this year? And we're holding him back and he's doing another year of preschool because, uh, that was what I was originally gonna do, but I'm actually now really, really happy that I'm doing that. But I, as a parent, can choose that, you know, when he enters kindergarten or whatever, so can a parent say, like, I don't want my kid to go to fourth grade, I wanna hold him back and do another year? Can they, can they do that?
What's the status of that?
Yeah, there, there's some current legislation that's sort of addressing that, so it's that balance of, of input from the district and the parent choice. So I think there might be a different answer to that potentially, how that plays out, um, Thomas has his hand up, okay.
Thank you.
And that bill would just be for the coming year, assuming it's signed, it would be solely for the coming year, after that, it would revert to the status quo. The status quo being local district policy about whether or not parents can sort of veto promotion or retention decisions. So ordinarily, promotion and retention decisions are, um, made by the, made by the district administration. With an opportunity to appeal to the school board and then perhaps even to the state board. This legislation, if it's signed, would allow parents to, you know, laterally, uh, retain a child in grade for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Then that adds social, emotional. Issues as well, probably.
Two of the options that, um. Or number Kane mentioned have been removed from legislation. You know, we are constrained about, uh, when schools may start by legislation. And the first iteration of, uh, the early literacy law had a retention in third grade. Requirement for students who are not proficient, the legislature was in the debt. Because of just sort of the social, emotional costs of being retained in grade. So that, those two options would require some legislative intervention, but those aren't the, the only two options on the table.
It's messy, right? And I think that's why we come back to often, um, understanding that policies shift and change over time. Understanding that kids aren't robots or washing machines or, or working with human beings here that. When, that's why we often come back to, where does the evidence point to us? What's most likely to help the most kids the most amount of time? And trying to bring that to bear in what we're doing with schools. And when you've got schools that've got fifty or sixty percent of the kids not getting to where they need to, but the rest aren't. That's not a kid-by-kid solution. Right, we still do the.
I, I wish, I wish it were, because that would be most effective, but.
Is there a way to kind of, I mean, I'm always kind of trying to find, I'm always talking to my friend who has older kids, but just, you know. I try to incorporate, because, you know, I have a son who's, again, he's turning five, so like, you know, we're working on sounds now, he has his letters and numbers now. So now we're trying to work on sounds and putting words together and things like that, but just good things for parents to do. Because I think there are a lot of things that parents can do, just incorporate into our daily lives, right? Because they're at school, but they're not at school the entire time, like on weekends and things, and, you know, we're all really busy, right? And I'm sure there are parents out there who would, if there were some easy techniques that we could use to kind of just like, you know. Can we just like flashcards or something, or just, you know, you know, there are certain television programs that are really good, like Super Y on, you know, PPS Kids, like, that's great. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm like, yeah, you wanna watch, I'm like, watch Super Wire, Zoomy, you know, so I mean, just things that we can like go to. Or, you know, I mean, there are just certain programs and things and like, there's, you know, Khan Academy Kids is great, you know, it's free. So just things that, if, if you're, if you're busy and you're just kind of like, I don't have time to do this, but like, hey, you know. Sit here with an iPad and, 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 you know, do, do this or watch this program or something for half an hour and. And that will at least, like, I know that they're getting some kind of educate, you know, some, I guess, age-appropriate educational content, but. You know, there's a lot of stuff out there on the internet, you don't wanna, parents just going and kind of try, it's hard to kind of filter through all that, what's good, what's not, kind of thing, you know?
You know.
This is Georgia, and I would just echo, that is a great point, because I have a son who has a hard time reading and it's just trying to. I'm not a teacher and I know how to read, but I don't necessarily know how to teach somebody, you know. How to read better when they're struggling, and so I think that's a great point that you make. I mean, is there something out there that then parents can access?
Yeah, the, so the short answer is yes, one of the silver linings in all of this, not that we would have chosen the path that we're on, but here we are. One, one of the silver linings is, uh, researchers and other professionals and educators who really are, are expert on. Like homeschool relationships and partnerships and early literacy, things like that, are starting to put together. You know, tips for families and parents on how to do some of these things that we can start pulling into what we're doing and making those things available as well. So there are more things, I mean, there's also a lot of things that maybe are less helpful too, because everybody's trying to.
And that's the thing, it's hard to filter through and I don't have time and I don't wanna, I don't wanna sit my kid in front of a TV program if it's not helpful or go on the internet and play a game that's, you know.
Right, so I think that's something we can do, is there are resources out there from reputable sources that we can put people to, not require, right? But there, there are, there are tools out there that, um, are growing that I think. Can be of help and service that we can certainly incorporate in what we're doing.
And maybe you already have, have them on the website somewhere, but like even a parent's resource, you know. On the Department of Education website that really gives some, because again, I'm with you trying to sort through all the stuff out there as a parent.
It'd be nice if it was like age-appropriate or just even like, hey, if you're trying to work on sounds, like, you know, phonics sounds with your, with your child, then. Here's some great resources, or if you're trying to work on letters, learning letters or something, that here's the great resource or numbers or something, you know, I mean, just like if you break it down like that, because. And, and some parents are just like, what, letters, what sounds, what, you know, I mean, so I mean, it'd be nice to just have it broken down, so you can just click the bow and glance at it and be like, oh, great, click on that resource and.
And the other, the other part of the equation is the ability to work with families before the kids even get to preschool. And, and so I made the question I have, and it's rhetorical question is that. Are S R funds available to work with students who are, or future students who are still needing some. I wouldn't say interventions, but some assistance, uh, assisting parents or whomever to get their child to only hit preschool. That they are up to speed, because when I work with early childhood in Iowa Falls, and Iowa Falls is not unique. It's just, okay, this child is coming from this home, this home needs more assistance than other families for this child to be successful. And so that's the other part of the equation, is that the family background, the family dynamics, some kids. Will have a real solid background, other kids may not. And what assistance can be provided so that they get to preschool? And what assistance can be provided so that they get to preschool that they are on a comparable level with others? And all that is to maintain that level of assistance for as long as it's needed.
Are S R funds available for early, is it just K through? Is, are they available for early childhood education as well?
Amy?
Well, you go ahead and then I'm going to follow up.
Okay. So the short answer is yes, and we are actually having discussions with DHS and workforce on how we would coordinate appropriate use of like, everybody's getting their own kind of relief funds, but it would be appropriate use of the funds that we get and the funds that they get for what is childcare and what is early learning. So
Okay.
there's ways to do that, but we have to figure out what it looks like.
Okay. And so, and then I'll extend on that to your point is that because we have partnerships and funding with different programs, it's going to allow us to get to different groups of people through different pathways. So everything you just said, there is money that could help mitigate some of that through services, through these partnerships that we're looking to do collectively so that we can get a little bit outside of what the actual school is. And then, or what school provides. And then for your guys' earlier question, you know, even back last summer, we provided a parent's resource page on a Google site that we had for all these very reasons. And I think with that existing platform, I think there's certainly a way we can promote that to a different place for it to live. And then update it as we continue to get more best practices, more resources. And particularly the ones that are in response to a national effort, what this looks like. And then for what we might determine is best for our, our students as well. So I, we can certainly share that and promote that and know that it's an ongoing, ongoing resource.
So since preschool is voluntary in Iowa, what percent of kids who could be in preschool are?
That's a great question. Turner.
We, we do know the number of kids that participate in statewide voluntary preschool program, but to be one thing that we don't have a full picture of is we can guess that number, but we don't have the hard number.
Of who could be.
Yeah.
Yeah. What, what percent of kids?
It's on our lap because I mean, my, my son goes to Science Center, which is part of that, right? But then he also goes to Plymouth. So I think, I don't think Plymouth is in that. So it's a outside of that. So then those kids wouldn't be counted, right?
Or that would be childcare as opposed to preschool?
It's, no, it's preschool. Yeah. It's a private preschool. Sorry, go ahead.
We, we obviously have the count of those that are participating in some public system, but it's not a distinct count, if you will. It's something we're working on. It's only an estimate.
Amy, did you have another?
No, and Jay talked about it. There's estimates and so, and you'll see that we have estimates, others have estimates, right?
Does anybody think there's ever a chance of mandatory four-year-old preschool as opposed to voluntary right now? There's ever going to be a will in the legislature to do that?
So.
Nationally, they're talking about it.
So, yeah, one of the things that we're, we're sort of looking at is we talk about early childhood, childcare, what it could look like. It's potentially defining what services could be provided to extend some of that learning opportunities. So I think as we, there's some stakeholder input to and some work groups. So I think as we walk through that, there'll certainly be more attention to it. There might be more resources for it. So it may or may not be, just depending on how, how collectively they would think about how we might staff and fund and, and have some oversight with that. But I think there's some potential to certainly extend it for potentially more populations of students.
I know that when when voluntary preschool first became a thing, our CAP agency in Marshalltown in one of our really low income school areas did a house to house visit. And I don't remember the numbers, but significantly increased the number of kids coming to preschool. You know, and, and then like, you can't keep doing that because there weren't funds to do it. And I mean, there's just so much that needs to be done that requires funding and or policy will to do it.
I mean, adding a grade is $250 million investment.
Yeah.
Just one.
Yeah.
So you can see there are constraints, right?
But what, but what's the return on that investment down the road in the workforce?
There's still activities, strategies that need to be done, even though, you, you know, there, there may not be that financial investment, right? That, that we can work on.
Also in like childcare, because I know that my, my nephew goes to childcare facility and he started preschool there. So I think that they maybe have an educator, you know, something. And so when he turned three, it was like, I'm in preschool now. So I think in the childcare, so it's not like he's going to a different place, but he's going to preschool classes in the childcare facility. So I, and I, I think I'm hearing more and more of that. So maybe something like that where it's, you don't have to create a whole other building, another place where they go, they just kind of bring a the educators in there, maybe. I'm not sure.
Can we put these priorities in a metric, like a, a leading indicator and a lagging indicator? I know that like from the reading, something that is, I don't know if the data comes to the department every day or every month. But if we could take these priorities and just, I know we have a lot of data, but one of the presenters said a key word, evidence. So keeping in mind every time that we look at priority one, priority six, what is it that we measure to know that we're, we're healthy? So I would love to see this come back, just like we see Davenport every month or every time we meet. I would like to get an update. How are we doing on the priorities? I don't know if there's a lot, this is a lot of priorities. How are we doing? Because that keep us, it keep us visible.
So I think the short answer to that is yes, these are, these priorities are real process oriented things. How many things are we doing? How many things are we providing? And how does that then translate out into implementation, which gets a little trickier? But I think, you know, the short answer to your question, Kim, is yes, I, I think we can bring back summaries and data of the work that's happening around these priorities. And I think what's going to be telling over time then back to the student outcome side of things is, are we seeing movement? Are we seeing reductions in gaps? Are we seeing overall increases in proficiency and performance that we'd want, which isn't a new goal, but we've got some new points of reference to consider now with the last year and a half and the pandemic and the impact that that's had. So is it possible? Absolutely. And we want to make sure the board, you've got the information that you need.
And, and I, all I ask is if we can think about being creative, approaching some of the priorities differently than in the past. So for an example, like something that comes to mind is we talk about going straight to the, the family. So you know, our local districts, our local school systems, they have a lot of influence. And they know those key community organizations and we can benchmark. So if I think about, I know some successful school districts inside of state, of the state of Iowa that has some, a lot of different variables. Socioeconomic, very diverse, multiple languages. And they are doing well, so we can really benchmark those. And, and, and then also just, just this taking this idea across the state. There are, you know, and there's different factors, rural versus urban, et cetera. But there's, there, you know, we know pockets of excellence. But I, I just want us to be able to try to remove the old way of doing things. And I think Mike May said once last meeting, reimagining, what could we do? You know, just really like think differently because it's going to, it's going to require us to leverage, create leverage. And like someone said, the presenter's all hands on deck, you know, there's a level of urgency. And I think, because it will, it will impact our state.
Well, thank you, both of you for that. And, and this obviously is an ongoing priority. So we'll make certain that we report back and give you guys updates on that as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Thanks.
So lunch is here somewhere. Let's take maybe 10 minutes to come back and then move into lunch and board reports that will probably be fairly brief and then get us kind of back on track a little bit. Does that sound okay? So 10 minutes off, the, if you're on Zoom, please come back to us in 10 minutes.
Are you going to mute it?
Yes. Brian? We're going to adjourn for 10 minutes, Brian.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you.